Okay, welcome everyone to the annual informational meeting for the town of Panton. At this time, I would like everybody to stand for the pledge. Before we begin with any of our information and logistics, I would like to welcome our local representative, Matt Miron, up to give a few words and answer a few questions.
Spin the mic around a little bit. Just turn the whole stand there. Turned it off.
There it is. All right, there we go. All right, good evening, everyone. So Representative Matt Miron, this is my fourth term in the legislature. Know a lot of you, if not all of you. I'm here this evening by myself, because Representative York and I, who else? We should make it all the same. That is one of us in New Haven and Addison, and I'll put different things after this. So this May adium, I serve as the Chair of our House Government Operations and Military Affairs Committee. It is a broad jurisdiction in that room. We do everything from public sector, public employee pensions, elections, how municipal governments are structured, all of our constitutional officers. We deal with military affairs, obviously, that National Guard, veterans affairs, and a broad range of other things. It is a really massive and broadly impactful jurisdiction to everybody's lives. You don't hear a ton of the stuff that we do, because it really is just governance dirt work. I really enjoy that. So what have my committee been up to this year? Some of you may have seen in the news that in our November election, there was a mishap with ballots. There was an error of the voter rule for Southern Vermont and Bennington. The first order of business from my committee, under constitutional authority and statute, was basically run by committee as a tribunal, for lack of a better term, to investigate why these ballot errors occurred and disseminate all that information into how we were going to deal with a contested election. That was a very long, arduous process, especially in a committee that had probably having its members be new to the legislature or new to itself. Since then, we've been working on this on these elections bills, working on a government accountability bill, and one of the things within that is reestablishing commission of legislators. This is a structure that existed in the past, and one of the reasons we want to bring this back is we want to go back into the last, say, six, eight years of legislative work. To look at the bills we put forward, charges we put forward, and make sure that the laws that we've enacted are living up to their legislative intent. If they aren't, find out why, and then reappropriate the money elsewhere or figure out, you know, whether or not these different entities, commissions, boards, et cetera, are providing positive outcomes that are beneficial to all lives. The education conversation is obviously, we've got a lot of slate of time. Of the three committees of jurisdiction, our tax committee plays a big role in that. Obviously, our education committee plays a big role in that. And my committee is going to play a big role in that, as restructuring government, restructuring elections. So whatever this district configuration looks like, warrants within. And then the board members themselves, how they get elected. And there's a lot of detail beyond that, but that is going to be a very notable lift for myself and me. With that, you know, that's pretty much a summary of like what we've been working on to that, to this point, at least in my room. And I just wanted to open it up to the floor here, hear from you folks, let you start asking questions. So, feel free. Yes?
Just a comment that I was saying, as I was talking with your committees, I think that a major concern for many of us is the quality of water. And we would hope that there be a legal justice in the legislature to figure out how to rectify us in an unacceptable circumstance, getting a letter that says we exceeded our regulations, which sounds like, oh, this is greatly thus or well, but instead is that we can't contest and what are all these things?
So you're talking about the letter from the EBA from the federal government?
No, from the legislative committee, from our local, Virgin's, County Water Group.
Understood.
The EBA, I believe, got involved.
Yeah.
There was no explanation of what caused it, looking at just kind of whole, it increased in organic matter. And there's been a lot of, well, obviously, that for me, we have a plan, so you can't find out. I know I call, they don't answer. You know, if they don't answer, you can't be nice if they don't call back. So I don't know what the cause is on that.
Who are you calling?
Jonathan, who was the person listed at the bottom of the notice, said he had a question to call. And he took his phone over, and I cried every time, but that didn't happen.
Do you need my email to give some information on that, so I can look into it? Yeah, one more. Yes?
Yeah, I noticed that the chemicals with the reason for the cause of it is they have stories that they have to use clean water to make it good for human consumption. And the chlorine binds to the bacteria in the water, and that is creating a center chemical that is a danger.
Yeah, but it's also what the search becomes, and it comes from an organic, it needs an organic matter.
Yeah, because that's why they have the evidence, you have chlorine, and that goes to the client.
But what is it causing the increase in organic matter? And what I'm asking, and to what I said, this has to be well, of course, we're right, you know, that.
I don't, I don't, we need to stay focused here.
No, 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 I'm talking. But no, I'm having to look into it in greater detail and find out why you and I could ask them us to. Is that it? Yes?
A little bit outstanding too. Last time you were here, you spoke about the organizational challenges at the state level relative to clean water. And I think the government had a lot of that.
So at the federal level right now, it's like they're working with A and R, Agency of Natural Resources. And one of the problems that is in my view running into is those two agencies, our agricultural agency and our Agency of Natural Resources, don't communicate that well together.
Those are valid.
Yeah. And I, quite frankly, am like hoping for better outcomes within those organizations. I mean, I don't have a great answer for what I follow up with right now. Again, I wish I did, but it's still.
But I was planning to split this to the agencies, and I also do.
I'm not aware of that happening yet.
Was that discussed?
Yeah, that's more of a conversation within the agencies themselves, the governor's office on those jurisdictions. The legislature has very little to do with how the statute governs those operations.
Sees me as a candidate for the government's compromise, this local issue. I'd be disappointed if the legislature had no voices in that. This is the federal government, the, they were going to take these states' priority regulations is away from the state because of the dysfunction. The federal government had to clarify by saying, regardless of where it's located, it's supposed to be A and R instead of that. All right, there must be some resistance to that. I have decisions in government, but enabling legislation funding to agents of the law.
Oh, no, that's true, yeah, we control their budgets.
I'm wondering if it's on us, maybe the committee pushed legislation into resolution of the federal.
I don't have a clean answer for that one, because none of these topics are like the jurisdiction, but I'm happy to work with that. The W Secretary of A and R is asking for it, as working on it. He very easily come up with a correct and clean answer. Yes?
Notwithstanding, that's not your committee, because you represent us. I'll say it for myself, who's might agree. We would ask you to carry forward our grave concern that everyone keeps saying we're working on it, but nothing is happening, and the quality of water is not improved. It seems under a simplistic circumstance, but anyway, if you would be kind enough, I would certainly get directly involved as our representative to say, my constituents, I'm happy.
No, for sure, and still Representative North, who's, as many other times, is on our environment committee, and that is the city's direct jurisdiction, and they're having some of these conversations. So I'll follow up with him, as we're sharing notes from our input from our separate agencies. But that is what we do at our representation, that it is different. So I will talk to you about that when we talk tomorrow about our conversation with folks. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate the time, folks, and I will definitely start getting more diligent with finding out what's going on with water quality issues and the lack of movement within the agencies, so.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Matt. All right, we're going to move on, we're going to talk about a few logistics first. I run a meeting differently than the select board goes their meeting, because I was trained differently. So if you want to speak, I'm going to ask that you come up and you state your name and you speak into the microphone so that everybody can hear and have a part of it. And so that's how we're going to proceed with the town meeting. And if it goes over three minutes and it's totally off topic, I'm going to try to direct us all back to the agenda so we can all go home tonight at some point, or spend the night, whatever we want to do. And I want to remind everyone tomorrow that full hours, they're open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And I also want to just make note, know and let everybody know, if you don't have a town report, there's some back there. The town report this year was dedicated to Rick Kletcher, who was our road foreman, thanking him for his hard work. And I also wanted to take this moment to have a moment of silence for those in Panton that have departed from us. I don't know exactly who everybody is, but I do want to mention that my neighbor, Edith Minor, who lived here my entire life, did pass away. She was a longtime volunteer in Panton as well. So if we could just take a moment for a moment of silence to remember our departed tenants. Okay. And I want to remind everyone that Article 235, our purpose discussion only, this is an informational meeting. And if you have not signed the sign-up sheet, there is one going around, we would like for everybody to sign in. And I would like, at this time, to introduce our staff that's here with us. We'll start with our new clerk and treasurer, Kyle. Kyle joined us in...
December.
December, just barely. And it's hit the ground running, so we appreciate everything and everything. And then our Assistant Town Clerk and Treasurer, Donna. Thank you, Donna will be running the Zoom tonight. Our Delinequent Tax Collector, Mrs. Barbara Fleming. Never called her by her first name. The zoning administrator, David Martini. Road Foreman, Rick Kletcher, and our road crew, Jeff Stone. And along, and now I'm going to turn the meeting to our town selectman, Howard Hall.
I don't look, I don't look much like Howard. We are, I'm going to, we have a very nice slideshow that Kyle put together for us. So going to get that up on the screen. Okay, so we have, feel like we've accomplished a lot this year. We, of course, had the solar panels, question, conversation, and the select board supporting the three-to-one vote of the town. We will continue to advocate for the town will, the towns will. Leslie Cadwell is the attorney hired by the town to represent Panton, using escrow money continues to work with us. The town has used approximately 6,000 of the 25,000 that have been allotted to us from Veritas. The Virgin's Area Rescue Squad, the changes are still in progress. Most of the towns are optimistic that these changes will be adopted, giving Panton a seat on the board, meeting quarterly to discuss VAR's finances and operations, and this will give the town more control over cost increases. The grand list values may increase slightly, reflecting updated sales and pricing. However, the assessor, Alex Heskock of Real Capital Consulting, thinks it will be a normal or average year, year-to-year adjustment. This will help stabilize the tax rate, both municipal and education. The town's operating budget is basically level funded from last year with cuts in several areas and some increases in other areas outside of town control. However, the total amount to be raised by taxes will be lower, reflecting the intention to not allocate money to the reserve funds this year. The education tax rate will also come down about 5%, reflecting the school's budget and use of previous year surplus to reduce their funding needs. And then we want to make sure we thank all of the volunteers that are listed in the town report, as well as Election Day volunteers, and all of those serving in unpaid positions in town government.
Thank you, everyone, thanks for being here, very much appreciated. Thank you to the select board for the work done this year. I have a few things that we'll be talking about this evening, and dive right in. Basically, so I did start in summer, Donna started in July. So it's a relatively new town office in terms of the administrative side of things. Both of us have both learned quickly, had some stumbles, picked ourselves up and continued to do the hard work of town. You know, we think about it a lot in terms of, you know, whether the town's population is 600 people, 6,000 people, or 60,000 people, many of the state requirements are the same. But in our office, we have a full-time person and a part-time person. In a large town, they have many more people to handle, let's say, requirements. So we're doing the best we can, and we appreciate the volunteers that we have at the town and the support of the townspeople and the select board in Panton, in this area. The town, when I first started, one of the first tasks that the select board asked me was to find a new auditing firm for the town. You'll notice in the town report, there is not an audit report listed. That was because the auditing firm, Telling and Hillman, unfortunately dropped the town in September, and it took us about two months to be able to find a new one that was appropriately priced for a town of our size. We received several quotes, and we settled on RHR Smith out of Maine. They are auditing many of our local towns, Virgin's, Ferrisburg, and others. And they completely recommended, and we have already finished the pre-audit, and in fact, we're meeting with them tomorrow, or excuse me, not tomorrow, Wednesday, Wednesday, to start the actual audit work and plan our intake schedules and all that. The audit report itself will hopefully be completed before the end of the fiscal year. It will be available on the town website, we will have free copies available at the town hall. We will announce it and make sure it's absolutely public in every way, shape, and form to the public, to members of the town. Select board will be talking about it, and I'll be talking about it. We have some grace in terms of the state law regarding this, because we were dropped so late in the process and we're waiting to, you know, as long as we're actively looking, and now we found an auditing firm, there's a little bit of grace period for a couple of states. But we're very much looking forward to having a continued audit for fiscal years to come. The town also, the Lister work and the assessing work here in the town. The town voted to get rid of its assessor years ago. The town Lister has been an unfilled position as far as the town, in the town government. The Lister assistant position is currently being filled by Donna Oliver here in the town office. The assessor part portion of this is being filled by Alan Heskock of Real Capital Consulting, who completed the reappraisal for the town. This came out to the recommendation of multiple people in the audit world that said, really, if you want to go with the first particularized reappraisal, and mostly for continuity of appraisals. You know, everyone kind of using the same scorecard, so that someone doesn't have to come in and redo someone's work. So we're happy to be working with them on that. And also asking Donna to help out with the Lister work, meaning that they won't be paying for the higher-priced assessing company to do the work that we, the ten, are able to do here in the office. As Teresa mentioned, the tax rate and the grand list, again, are hopefully stabilized from last year's reappraisal. The adjustment should be approximately, you know, a couple percentage points, we're hoping. There wasn't much in the way of new construction in the town, there wasn't much in the way of buying and selling in the town, and that is usually what drives that price of the grand list, we got to increase it. So we're hoping that it stabilizes, as it has in years past. So those are some of the challenges that we face coming into it, but opportunities, it's a fresh start. I came into the job in December with the fresh eyes on a lot of things. We are implementing new procedures based on best practices from other towns and from other accounting and fee accountants that we're working with. There's a new organizational opportunity in the town. As we've spoken about at past select board meetings, we've been trying to reorganize and make sure that the town is kind of well-functioning in its organizational capacity, literally the paperwork that we have to keep, and there's a lot of it. And we have some excellent volunteers who have been coming in several hours per week to help out in the organization. If anyone's interested in helping the town in that way, please speak to me, you're at the meeting, or at a later date, and make your experience. Wonderful to get to town and population, and it is truly awesome to see how many people show up at budget meetings, select board meetings, how engaged they are. I've been able to reach out to so many people with such kind of historical and institutional knowledge of the town for resources, helping me get activated and get up to speed. And it's really been wonderful to be able to engage so many people on these issues. And again, special thanks, special thanks, thanks, excuse me, to all those who have worked in the town's office and really improved our function. One of the things I wanted to show you tonight was, and this is based on a couple of different things, so this is what we call budget to actual. And we decide, I decided to include this chart, because I wanted to talk about, a little bit about the town budget and a little bit about the way that the town budget kind of, you know, plays out. Budgets are difficult things. You budget in March for a fiscal year that doesn't start until June, you don't know how the winter's going to be that year, you don't know how the winter's going to finish up in the current year. And so, you know, sometimes that makes a difference, we don't know about storms, like the reason why. There's a variety of externalities that affect our budget. The reason that I showed this chart and these numbers is because these are audit figures from the town. Twenty-two and twenty-three, when the town last considered, last had an official audit. The numbers above this line here, this baseline, that's zero. That would reflect the budget that came in about exactly what it was. The budget to actual means equals, if you said we spent $1,000, we spent $1,000. The greater the variance, the greater we spend it. The greater the variance this direction, the greater we save it, because of a variety of factors. So the categories here are dark blue is revenues. In many years, we took in 20, 25% more revenue than we expected. This is due to a variety of factors, including taxes, tax sales, extra revenue that the town generated through a variety of non-tax means, things like that. Salaries are the light pink, or excuse me, light blue, and the orange. And you can see that in 2019, salaries were basically what they were budgeted for. And then as we move along, we see that, in fact, they vary a little bit. 2022 being particularly, a particular year where the salaries exceeded the budget by about 10% on each side. Expenditures are purple line for highway and dark green for the office. You can see that the biggest variance, and again, these are audit figures, meaning that our auditing firm reconciled our books and audited our books to show us where that variance was. You can see the highway often exceeded its budget. Now, that is, again, due to a variety of factors. They include debt service in some of these, so the acquisition of new vehicles. They include, obviously, salt, sand, gravel, paving, a variety of different expenditures. And so we can see that there was variance in those highway budgets, but there were also in 2020, a lower one in terms of these taxes. And office expenditures in dark green often mirror that same thing. So again, this is mostly to show that budgets are kind of living creatures. We try as hard as we can to get as close as we can to what we're spending, but oftentimes, externalities remove some level of control. This is the 2026 fiscal budget for this year, broken up into four different, it's going to be five different colors. We have the dark blue debt service, representing around 11% of the town's budget, approximately $117,000. This is debt service for the town's trunk, this is debt service for the salt shed, this is debt service for the excavator, and this is any remaining debt service that we have on a couple. I think those are really the big three. The largest single piece right there is salaries and benefits, approximately 39% of the town's budget. This is made up of, obviously, all benefits that the town offers and salaries, including things like overtime. The dark green are office expenditures, meaning things here in the office, the lighting supply, paper, keeping the lights out in the town hall, all those various things. That represents about 18% of the town's budget. Actually, this is all proposed, again, for fiscal year 26. And the dark, excuse me, the turquoise up in the corner is 32% of highway, not highway expenses, non-salaried. Both the office and the highway expenses are non-salaried, reflecting all the things in the shop. The vehicle maintenance, the paving materials, all the different sundry aspects that goes into running a town. One of the things that the Addison and the Fenton came out with this week was budget context, I guess you'd call it. And these are towns in our area, these are towns in Addison County. The numbers are reflective of budget increases that these towns are proposing this year for their voters' consideration. These are amounts reflected, the percentage increases, these amounts reflected to be raised by taxes. I tried to make it a apples-to-apples comparison on that. And with the exception of Hancock, who's on, which is down 8% in terms of their budget, every town in Addison County is looking at a budget increase, several of them by really significant amounts. I think it was Ocean, Mountain, who decided this year to purchase highway equipment through their budget instead of through voter allocated expenses, voter-approved expenses on the particles. Contextually, thinking about this, you know, these towns are often, they're often not reappraised. Addison has gone through a reappraisal in 12, 15 years. Lincoln as well, I believe. Ferrisburg is going through their reappraisal right now, and Virgin's, which is on here, is also going through their reappraisal right now. These towns are somewhat in the position that Panton was last year. They're just, they were slightly ahead of the curve in terms of budget expenditures, you know, budget increases. These towns being reflective, this is, this year, they're spending that much more. Walden going up 23%, reflective of an increase in salary to their town clerk and the new zoning administrator. Since Rick couldn't make it tonight, and Jeff couldn't make it tonight, I'll also discuss the highway department as well. The highway department stockpiled materials this year in advance of price increases that were coming down the pipe. The gravel increased by 15, or excuse me, $5 a ton, only in March 1st. So we bought as much as we could in February. The, again, the same, that same way, hauling costs were particularly expensive. They were approximately $67,000 to get material, so Rick and Jeff worked. So Rick and Jeff worked multiple days, uh, using town trucks to be able to do the hauling of that material themselves rather than hire it out. Uh, the loader will be in need of replacement in the near future, however, this year it's not even up for consideration. Uh, the paving plan and policy, which is something we'll get to in a minute, is something that I'm working on with the road foreman. It's something that the citizens' budget committee has asked for, and it's also something that is reflective of best practices by a number of consulting groups that are looking to, uh, you know, help town improve itself. In terms of grants for the culverts on Peden Road and the storm damage, we submitted our FEMA application for the amount of approximately seventy-one thousand dollars that was completed about two weeks ago. Um, obviously, with what's going on in Washington, we are concerned, um, but still hopeful because the FEMA officials that we've spoken to continue to be engaged with us. They haven't stopped answering the phone, so we're, we're taking that as a relatively good sign. Um, but of that seventy-one thousand dollars, the town will be responsible for approximately eight thousand of it. FEMA will be covering seventy-five percent, and the town covering, uh, excuse me, the state covering another twelve percent, leaving about twelve percent of that total for the town to handle. It's about eighty-eight hundred dollars. Um, we are applying for the structures grant, uh, to handle the culverts on Pitten Road. Very hopeful that that's going to go through as well. And between those, the FEMA money and the structures grant, we're hoping to be able to replace the culverts that are in serious need of degradation right now in Pitten Road. We're continuing to work to identify areas in the town garage to reduce expenses. Um, in-house work is going to continue, tool and vehicle construction, of which list of, uh, highway vehicles. There are several that are constructed in-house by Rick over the years, um, to offset the cost of having to buy the same, same piece of equipment. Um, and we're also doing oil changes, more routine maintenance on our vehicles to try and avoid having to contract those services. Uh, we will also continue working on loan segments, which will improve our state disaster persistence. If we reach a certain level, and this is, this is going to be really important as the town plan is also up for development this year. If we agree to the river corridors state statutes regarding zoning in river corridor areas, the state will cover an additional seven point five percent of any disaster fund, meaning that the towns, uh, will have, the town's bill, say in this FEMA thing, will be reduced from eight thousand down to about five. So it would save us another three thousand dollars. Our goal is to get that done in the next town plan and adopt those zoning regulations and continue working on what they call segments to make sure that they're up to codes and standards for the, uh, for the state. Uh, one of the things that is going to be really important going forward is thinking about our road as, our road network as an asset. Uh, I think that that is something that has kind of fallen by the wayside by the treasurer's office and the road foreman. And it really, when you think about it, it's the single most valuable thing that the town has. Uh, our road asset, Pitten has put approximately two point eight billion dollars into the road network here, and since two thousand and three. Uh, it's the single largest value asset that we possess, uh, possess. The current year worth, we had to replace every road in Pitten, which cost approximately seven point three million dollars. Um, the asset value of maintenance and improvement at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, where we ended, because this is, uh, something that's done by our auditing firms, it's depreciation involved, was approximately two point four million dollars. It's depreciating at a rate of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year. Uh, we put approximately a hundred thousand dollars a year into repaving and re-treatment of roads for favor. Um, so we are slightly behind the depreciation curve on that. The average life or asset value left in the network was about fifty-six percent from when we started to, to now. Uh, an example of this, and this is one that, that I've just worked on in the last couple of days, Pitten Road, for instance, is paved and is maintained for approximately fourteen hundred cars per day. According to the federal government, a fully loaded semi truck of eighty thousand pounds is equal, four thousand to ten thousand tons. That is what the federal government uses when they calculate road stresses and values on the road itself. Uh, basically, meaning that, you know, we have approximately five hundred and ten thou, you know, we take fourteen hundred, multiply that by three sixty-five, we're talking about five hundred thousand cars a year. And each semi that drives down the road is worth anywhere between four and ten thousand cars. Well, it doesn't take many semi trucks to totally equal the stress we place on the road by the average cars per day that we are trying to build and maintain that road network. So again, thinking about the road network as an asset is going to be an important part of our considerations on the poll. One of the things that I'd like to do is develop, uh, a paving policy in addition to our paving plan, which is included in the town report. We took the paving plan and we extended it out approximately ten years to try and get good ideas of what we're trying to accomplish. It obviously is kind of a living document as well, uh, based on other towns, based on the, uh, you know, Addison, Caving Jersey Street up to their line. Well, we might want to pave Jersey Street, uh, up to that line as well, so to create a better, uh, instead of a gap in between those two from paving differences, we might want to do it at the same time. So there's kind of these evolutions based on what other towns are doing as well. Uh, but the code, uh, the, the town itself agrees to what's called codes and standards, which are principles that set down by the agency of transportation in order to provide the actual nuts and bolts, what the slope of the road should be, how high the crown should be, what the ditches should look like, what the edges of the road should look like, the thickness of paving and all that. We agree to that every single year, the select board adopts that. And that is the standard by which Rick uses to be able to judge whether or not a road is in need of re-treatment, repaving, things like that. One of the things that I'd like to do, though, is create a better road network inventory in which each road in our inventory gets upgraded. And then we, we make decisions that are more monetarily based, based on the grade of that road, you know, A, B, C, or D, for instance, to try and get a handle on, maybe this road is paved a little bit better, maybe this road was paved a little bit worse. It has lots to do with the condition of the actual material itself, how far it has to travel to get you, temperature is when we apply it to the road. Lots of different factors go into that, how well it sets. Uh, and so what we're trying to do is we're going to start developing, um, metrics to be able to base our understanding of how we're treating this large asset for the town. Uh, the future considerations is part of that. There's only two companies in the Champaign Valley offering paving services. One is Pikes, the other is DNF. Pikes costs approximately a hundred plus dollars a ton for material. DNF is currently charging eighty-seven dollars a ton, which was a two-dollar increase from last year. It costs, it takes approximately fifteen hundred tons of paving material to do one mile of road, meaning that two dollars in addition on every ton, these will pay three thousand dollars more to pave a mile of road than it did last year. Uh, again, working with neighboring towns to tie into roads to ensure better paved surfaces and track sealing. Track sealing, the town shares a track sealing with a variety of other towns. Track sealing is a really good way to do preventative maintenance on our paved surfaces, and we're really hopeful that we can continue that in the future to improve the long term. On the horizon for the town opinion, goals for next year, goals for now. Uh, the select board and the court treasurer continue to reduce budget and i- identify areas of production. There are several things that we've done this year, there are several things we want to continue to do. Um, better, you know, we want to find better contracts with services. We want to improve our ability to purchase things at a lower price. Uh, our goal is to use the reserve funds to offset both budget overages and future expenses. We have a really well-capitalized reserve fund, approximately four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Our goal is to use some of them to avoid future tax increases. The highway department continuing to work on the paving plan policy with the town clerk's office and treasurer's office. Uh, we updated the town plan, which the Development Renew Board and Planning Commission, with the town clerk's office, um, are applying for a grant this year, um, to be able to fin, to do that and update the town plan, again, to include some, um, some important things like zoning enforcement, um, and some other things like, uh, those river corridor protections that I spoke of earlier. Uh, our continued excellent relationship with our neighboring towns and services. Uh, and the select board's continued vigilance in regards to the Burris projects, supporting the will of the town, as stated by the select board. Um, this last one here, a special town meeting to be held in spring, summer of twenty-twenty-five, either charter or possible select board member intervention. This was, uh, an issue that came to life over the course of the last several months. And basically, one of the questions that you'll be asked to vote on tomorrow is to increase the size of the select board from three members to five members. If that happens, what needs to happen immediately after that, as soon as possible, is going to be a special town meeting to allow for the election of those two select board members. The reasons why are because when we increase the size of the select board, we increase the quorum amount of the select board as well, immediately, without the ability of the select board to appoint other select board members. And so what happens is that the select board, which is now three, will become five. The quorum right now is two. The quorum would become three, meaning the select board would have to have a hundred percent attendance at every select board meeting, in which there would be hopefully fewer than six meetings in between now and whatever special town meeting we get to. Additionally, uh, they would have to vote to be able to do any town business in unison, which is not a great, you know, democratic principle, uh, overall. The additional question to charter change is that, um, there were several issues brought to the town clerk's office for charter, uh, or to town, changing the town charter. Uh, one of those was to increase the size of the select board, which is a ballot article this year. The other was to allow for the recall of select board officials or any elected official here in the town. Um, while that charter was withdrawn by the charter petitioner, the select board decided to include it as a potential charter for a special town meeting upcoming, with an additional caveat to protect a democratically-elected, uh, select board or elected official from not being removed from office unless the amount to remove that person, the votes to remove that person are equal to the votes that elected them in the first place. Meaning that we gathered here, vote, and then a special town meeting is held, ten people show up, and those people are able to recall a person who was elected, the elected body of, you know, fifty or thirty-five, forty, however many we are. Um, that will be a part of any special town meeting consideration going forward. The select board has already discussed their willingness to do that, and, uh, we will keep you updated. I appreciate the town's grace on this matter of allowing the town clerk's office to handle one election at a time, and, uh, promise that they, that there will be consistent and constant updates on this process as we move forward. And that's it.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thanks. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Kyle? At this time, if you do, I ask that you come up and state your name and... Thank you so much. That was very, I, very informative and a lot, yeah, yeah.
I should add a copy of this presentation I'll make available on the website. A copy of all my documentation of everything I've mentioned here will be available on the website or the town clerk's office. Anyone interested in any specific details, please let me know. I will get two copies of all the specific information included in that presentation.
All right, we have other town officers that may or may not have a report to give, um, so I'd like to ask if there are any elected officers that would like to give a report that, um, now is the time to do it. Or appointed, or appointed, okay, yeah. So I, I, I will say, because this is elected officers, is myself, Martha, is the moderator. Select board is Howard Hall, Theresa Boucher, Zach Weaver, and the constable is Jill Carter. Dog warden is Reese Yarren. The town grandeur was eliminated. Our water comministers are Chris Cook, John DeGraff, and Bob Hartenstein was appointed to serve until, um, tomorrow. Um, justice of the peace, Gretchen Bailey, elected at general election, oh. Yeah, they were, they were elected in the fall, sorry, and, yeah. Gretchen Bailey, Eileen Brennan, James Dayton, Paula Moore, Diana Raphael, and the Addison Northwest School Board representative, Martha DeGraff, also myself. And then our appointed officers are the DRB, which is Mary Rudd, Bethany Brady Carroll, Gretchen Bailey, Catherine Hayes, and Anna Hopper. And regional county planning representative is James Dayton, and we have a vacant position for the planning representative. So if you're interested in any of these appointed positions, um, how does that work? Do they reach out to you?
Uh, yes.
And for, um, Addison County Solid Waste is Jay Paul Sokol. We also have a vacancy there. Town advisor is also vacant. Town fence hero is vacant. Our tree warden is Diana Raphael. Oh, it's also, our tree warden is also vacant. Um, emergency management coordinator is Bob Brock, he's here. Um, civil defense is the select board. The town nine-one-one coordinator is Jay Paul Sokol. Green update chair is Luisia Vanelle. Co-chair is Paula Moore. Town health officer is Jeffrey Nelson. Transportation advisory committee delegate is Howard Hall, and we have a vacancy there as well. Um, and our appointment by the state for the town fireworks quarter is Matt Frayley. So if any of those people want to come up and give a report on anything, you're welcome to use them. No? Okay. Having no more reports, um, we're going to move on to article two, and that is to elect the following officers by Australian ballot tomorrow and moderator one-year term. And at this time, any contested, and anyone that would like to speak about their position, they're, um, welcome. I'll ask you to come up and introduce yourself and say whatever you want. Um, I am running for moderator tomorrow, so feel free to elect me or elect yourself if you don't want me. But don't believe it, but I can't tell people how to vote. Select board member for a three-year term. We do have a contested race at this time, and I do see that Reese Yarren is here. Introduce Reese as a Pitten resident. Want to say something or?
Uh, no, Reese Yarren's been in Pitten for about four years. Um, here with my daughter, Leah, tonight, and, yeah. If you're interested in voting, please go for a regional vote.
And our board chair, Howard Hall.
Yeah, as you guys know, I'm Howard Hall. I've been on the select board for approximately ten years now. Um, I think the three things that really guide me is, what I really like is that I try to leave things better than I found them. And that's been really my goal my whole life, that, you know, always trying to do that. You know, the other thing I think is important is to maintain, maintain the town's buildings, roads, equipment, and the staff. Because our crew, you know, Bob, uh, Rick and Jeff Stone are phenomenal. Jeff Stone does so much for the town. And Rick Lutcher, twenty years he's been on the town, and he knows where everything is. He's a phenomenal worker, and all those men deserve a lot of thanks. And I would also say Kyle and Donna, fabulous workers. We've got some great hires, and we want to keep them because it is hard to find people to work, and these are great workers, and we really want to take care of them. The other thing is, I really want to balance the town's taxes with the needs of the town. The idea is really not to always go with the cheapest item or do it the cheapest way because it's really important to have good quality stuff and do the right, do the job right because you do it the wrong way, then you go back and you have to fix it and do something different. So those are my major goals, and I think the town, when I started on the select board, has really improved, we've really changed. You can look around, that our building is in phenomenal shape, all our buildings are in good shape, our equipment's in great shape, and we've done a really a good job to keep our little small town of six hundred and twenty people as probably the North Star in Addison County. A lot of towns look at Pitten and go like, wow, you really, you guys really got your act together here. So that is not just me, that is our select board, who's been with us, with me. Zach's been nine and a half years, and Theresa's been there for nine years. So we've done a great job, I think, and I'm asking for your vote tomorrow, so I would appreciate it. So thank you.
Constable, and I'm not sure if anybody's running for constable, but anyone here on the ballot for constable? Dog warden. Reese is also our dog warden, who's on for tomorrow. Presents Pitten Water District representative for a three-year term. I know we have some people running, so, um, if you would like to speak that, anybody? And for the two-year term, uh, filling the remainder of the two-year term.
Hi, I'm Kathy Kenna, and I am running for the two-year term on the waters Pitten Water District. I've worked for the Water District for seven and a half years as assistant clerk. Um, I feel that I have the knowledge of how the Water District is run, how the off, especially the office, that is where the office, that is where I worked. I did mostly accounts receivable, but I also did payroll and paid bills and did the bill, helped with the billing. I mailed out the billings. I did the most everything that you do in the office. I did a lot of filing in the office, all the different reports and stuff, and I'm asking for your vote tomorrow.
Article Three, shall the voters adopt the proposed fiscal year 2026, which is the July 1st, 2025 to June 30, 2026, general fund operating budget in the amount of 1,119,954, of which 955,898 shall be raised by taxes and $164,056 by non-tax revenue excluding any other amounts authorized by the voters. Like everyone to note there, I have this highlighted in my book, the total expenditures will be increased by any separate articles voted independently. So that is, that is the amount for Article Three, but should Article Four pass, that amount will increase along with Article Five. So moving, are there any questions on Article Three at this time? Article Four, shall the voters appropriate the following sums, which shall be raised by taxes, to be placed in the town reserve fund accounts as noted? 2,400 in the emergency fund, 2,000 in the reappraisal fund, for a total of $4,400. That amount would be added to Article Three should it pass. Yes?
I have a question on Article Three.
Yep?
On the website, it says that the budget will be reduced by 6%. For that, it's previously mentioned that our progress is going to be reduced by 10% from last year. But when you look at the budget here, there's two different lines, whole operating bracket. It's 99% of last year, which means that's 1% reduction in taxes. And down on, that's the total operating goal. Before, it needed a certain percentage of taxes. And I'm just wondering how that actually applies to this year as well?
That is a question.
The 6% is reflected of the total amount to be raised by taxes. The budget itself, as was mentioned earlier, is level funded approximately from last year. The amount that we're looking to raise by taxes is down 6% from last year. We're not looking to capitalize the reserve funds to fund the reserve funds more than what is mentioned in Article Four, an amount of $4,400. Last year, the reserve funds were increased by $76,500. We currently have 425,000 and some odd in the reserve funds right now. My view coming into the situation is that our reserve funds are adequately capitalized, not looking to raise them beyond, the 2,000 for the reappraisal fund is a prudent choice. The 2,400 for the emergency fund increases the emergency fund to its statutory 7% of budgetary limit amount. However, the 6% decrease is in the amount that we're looking to raise by taxes. So we are looking, the budget itself will be, the amount to be raised by taxes is 6% lower than last year, and the education tax is also going to come down 5% from last year.
I know your chart that you were showing earlier about the budget for other towns came under, and what we had, like I said, last year was down 33% increase. The year before was 13% increase. The year before that was an 8% increase. So over the last four years, we can't have an increase by 8%. Which is quite a bit. For four years for a town of 700 people. And I think that that should be included in that charter.
Any other questions? Okay. Article Five, shall the voters appropriate $13,451 of PAC funds to the following organizations in the amount listed? I don't think I'm going to go through and read them all. It's all on page four unless I have... Oh, I will. Adams County Cemetery Association, but it's listed as one on the ballot, correct?
Yeah.
Adams County Cemetery Association is $2,500. Addison County Court of Virgin is $210. Addison County Home Health and Hospice is $800. Addison County Parent Child Center is $800. Addison County Gritters is $250. Age Well, which used to be the Champlain Valley Agency on Aging, is $650. The Boys and Girls Club of Virgins is $1,000. The Charter House in Middlebury is $1,000. The Counseling Service of Addison County is $500. Elderly Services is $850. Greenup Vermont is $50. Homeward Bound, $500. Hope, $500. John Graham Shelter, $450. The Open Door Clinic, $500. RSVP, $350. Tri-Valley Transit, $691. Turning Point Center, $1,000. The Vermont Family Network, $250. And Women's Safe, $600. Again, that total amount of the $13,451, if it is approved, is added to this Article Three for that, for a total number, so people get that picture. In this book, there are explanations from all of these people, or they've submitted some reports and letters in there, so you can go read them all and look at those. Are there any questions on Article Five? Yes?
Yes, I'm Debbie Grace, and I would just like to know what would it take to get these wrote down so we vote on them separately? Because it's pretty much, anybody could ask for anything. And once it's put in there, it's a yes or no for all, and we should be able to pick and choose what ones we really think we need. It used to be that way. And at another point, anyone on here, but really, you know, it shouldn't be an all for one. That's got us in trouble at other votes, and it should be broke down hopefully by next year where we can vote on these things separately.
Thank you, Debbie.
Point taken. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Article Six, shall the town of Patton pursuant to 17 VSA Section 2,650B increase the board of select persons from three to five members with the terms of the new members to be two years? This article is a yes or no vote that is on the ballot, and it is to increase the select persons from three to five members. Currently, we have three, it would increase it to five. Are there any questions or comments on that?
I'm sorry, I'd just like to reiterate again. If this passes, what's going to happen is there's going to be a special town meeting at some point later in the summer, or spring or summer, and it is going to create, you know, a quorum, a quorum change for the select board. We will be asking for petitions for two additional members. We will be asking for, you know, votes to participate in that process, and it will, if no one gets voted, if no one, say, say we increase the size, no one petitions to join the select board. What would happen at that point is that the select board could then appoint two people. The select board can't appoint people in the case of creation of a vacancy, but they can appoint select board members if no one chooses to run in an election. So is that, does everyone understand that? Because I know there was some questions, I want to make sure. No questions at all?
Can you stand up and say your name? I'm sorry.
I mean, towns that have done this, so like, say Ferrisburg did this in 1994. They increased the size of their select board by two members. They had a one-year, they had a one-year term and a two-year term, but which you can allow. Ferrisburg was growing. They felt like they wanted to increase the representation on their board. Their population has continued to grow and, continued to grow, and their select board has been filled most years to its four to five members. However, this year, in Ferrisburg, there are only three people on the ballot, three available seats, so it's not as though they're clamoring to get onto the select board there. It just so happens that they did it in 1994 to, as the town was growing in size. You know, benefits would be an increased participation in the select board, increased, you know, dialogue perhaps, broader viewpoints, things like that. I mean, the general things that you would get in any kind of increase of a government's size.
Kathy, or, sorry. Okay, Mr. Vogt?
Yeah, I was just wondering, if you appoint, does that mean you can appoint people outside of the town yet?
No.
So if nobody comes forward, how do you appoint somebody when nobody wants?
Well, again, it's an excellent question. I have to, right, no, I agree. It's one of the things that has been crossing my mind. Like, in theory, I have no issue, sorry, I didn't realize it was off. It turns itself off. In theory, I have no issue having five people. I do look at our continued list of vacancies of things that we cannot already fill and wonder if that then is going to create a problem filling something like a select board seat.
I think I'm going to, can I answer that, or can I just be the moderator a little bit?
You can be a citizen.
You can step down to the moderator's table.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'm stepping down from the moderator. The city of Virgins, you had this issue where a bunch of the city clerk, the council members resigned, and they couldn't conduct any official business at the time until that was, that was hammered, that they had enough people. So eventually, you'll get sick of having those city businesses, someone else should say, but anyway, now I'm the moderator again. That's what happens.
Yes, as being a member of many volunteer organizations and neighbor organizations, people will not step up. But if I come right to you and ask you personally, will you please take that decision? You will find people are quicker to do it if they're asked, because most people don't think that they're valuable or not good. But when you ask them, that makes you feel that you, you're happy with them, and you know they will will that decision. So I don't think it will be a hard time in filling it. You might just have to be gentle and ask.
Thank you. Yeah.
Just wanted to mention that I think the motivation behind asking, we have this on the ballot, was basically that people want more diversity and change making, want a bigger democratic process to take place, since they felt like the vision, she knows that many people in town are hot, looking to do their own.
Did everybody hear that? Okay, yeah.
And just add on to the, I also believe that many times, there will be two members of the select board present, and I think that really limits, you know, what can be done, or if one of the town is not that big, but to only have two people at the select board present, I think, you know, we could benefit for a former.
Yeah, Kirsten.
And anybody from the town that's at the board or just want to talk to the board?
We are the contested race, so yes. Oh, for the two of us?
We have not seen that. We have, there was, nobody has come, came to the board.
Yeah, we, yeah.
We've never seen it.
No, no.
I mean, there may be people...
It's, I'll say, it's concerning because we've been on the board long enough to know after town meetings, there's always vacancies, and it is a major, even asking people, we seek out people to ask to appoint to these positions. It is a difficult task to get participation. I'm all for if we can have more, that's beautiful, but it's extremely difficult to find two more people and constantly do that. I've been, I've run opposed my last three elections. No one is interested in Reese this year as the first contested in many years, so... But it's on the ballot. It's your town's choice for sure.
Yeah, 100%.
This is why we eliminated some positions that, you know, auditors, we didn't have any people who wanted to be auditors. There was one person that wanted to be an auditor, and so there was no point of having auditors when people don't even apply or actually want to do it. Or if they were auditors, they weren't showing up. So that was a problem for us. And so there are a lot of things that are empty positions, and it's hard to sit there and regulate and do things for the town. Example for my... Committee, because there's not a lot of people who want to do that. And so those positions have to be filled, and those things are essential for us because, yeah, we all want high-speed internet, but someone has to go to a Maple Broad meeting once a month to have that conversation with them. Somebody has to go to the attack committee to make sure we get our money for our roads that are for our, for our town and make sure that gets covered. And somebody has to go there and make sure we have ambulance show up because we had a situation with our town with ambulances, where we had two and a half months where an ambulance was not available for our community because nobody was working. And yes, they have improved a lot. They are improving, and I could say, thank you Virgins Rescue Squad for improving, and I appreciate that. It's a good thing. We're moving forward on those things, but it's essential that people get involved and do things, and it's hard for one or two people to do that. And like many sports, many Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts, you have 5% or 6% of the people doing 90% of the work.
Yeah.
Debbie has her hand up. I'll get you next, sorry.
As a lifetime member of Virgins Rescue, and I have standards, every vehicle I have and every room I have, we were never two months without ambulance service. We might have had a rig that was out, and they had to come in from somewhere else, or yes, we might have had a bay or sold once in a while for an hour or two.
It wasn't, it was, I'm sorry, if I was, I don't want anybody to misunderstand. It was not two and a half months in a row. It was a total number of hours over the course of the year when totaled would have equaled two and a half months.
So you know what I say? Join, become a member of the local team.
I think that's a fantastic idea.
I'm going to call this back to Article Six, and then we can move on to Article Seven for any other business.
What's better?
Yeah, was yours regarding the expansion of the select persons from three to five? Yeah. Can you state your name? Monique, hi.
I just have, so, I'm trying to think of the adult, is there like a place to like see what the main component of the deal appointed potentially is, like, members to be, so that people can familiarize themselves with like, if you want that person to specifically be on, I may use a bunch of, um, role?
I will make sure that the town website reflects that if it's not already up there.
And I would encourage you to come to regular select board meetings and see what we do. We're going to be starting next week, meeting on Wednesdays at 5:00. Yeah, next week's, the 12th, starting on Wednesdays, not on Mondays anymore.
Reese?
You guys mentioned eliminating some positions, does the town have more than five members?
Not that I'm aware of.
You wouldn't be able to answer that.
At one point, it was two. I remember when it was two, when I was a kid, and you couldn't talk, right? Someone resigned, yeah, there were two people, mom and someone else, and they couldn't even have a conversation because you needed to have, it would have been a quorum, but I don't know. I don't know that answer. You had your hand up, sir. What's your name? Chris.
I have a question. The quorum for select, select now is two?
Correct.
And you have, and then to authorize any reading of anything, you have, you can have no dissenting votes?
Give two.
Well, you have to, yeah, you can have, you have to have two approving votes to pass anything in a, when you have a quorum of, with a select board of three. Three.
Three. With two dissenting, I mean, in an ideal...
You can have five people, you need three positives and two negatives, or, you know, or three negatives and two positives.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah.
You have the comment that Vermont statute that it, the members of the left board, unless the town votes against it, that's just, that's just my statute. And back to the vacancies, going to vacancies. And that to the vacancies, filling the vacancies, I will make the comment that I have known numerous people that, um, expressed interest in some of these vacancies that have been denied for no real good reason. I find it makes sense that that happened to him. And there are a lot of people that have, uh, if you could feel the, uh, disarray for that.
Thank you. Anybody else on the select board Article Six? Yes?
So, back to the quorum.
Yeah.
So, any other problems, the select board had problems attracting other members? And so let's say that the state of three, you couldn't find two others.
Yeah.
The select board has a vote missing to pass anything.
Correct.
Correct. Or one person can just vote no on everything and nothing gets done.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Yes?
I just think that all those vacancies and stuff, I think they need to be publicized more on, on the website and stuff. I mean, because unless you're reading the town report, like right now, you know, you wouldn't know there was a vacancy.
Thank you.
Sharon, sorry, one more thing.
Yeah, sure.
It is a law that when a vacancy occurs, it is supposed to be advertised immediately to the town authorities. And there's a number of vacancies that occurred that I have not seen any advertising for at all. But the town, the advisor, the tree wardens, no, no information went out at all. And that was supposed to have been gathered. The town has two days, ten days to report these areas.
Okay, thank you.
Beside the tree warden, no vacancies occurred, and you're, you're right on that. I should have advertised it to the tree warden. I do apologize. It was a, she resigned basically just as I started, and I kind of lost track of that. So I will make sure to advertise in the future for future positions. But Diana Raphael didn't resign, and we are in need of a tree warden, um, as we have a pretty good grant available that the town is kind of, that I'm currently administering, among other things. Uh, so if anyone wants to volunteer for tree warden, I have a medium job to put your work to. Um, and we have an excellent grant that needs administration and assistance, so. It has to be a resident candidate, yes.
Oh, very important, but, uh, they changed that law. It used to be that it had to be a resident, but they changed that law. It's now not necessary to be a resident or something.
Great, I'll, yeah, I will make sure of that, and we will absolutely, yeah, it doesn't have to be a resident candidate.
Is there any more discussion on Article Six? Oh, yeah, okay, yes, what, what's your name, sir?
I have to create more work for you. I'll see that, um, other descriptions of, you know, the select board members, certain positions, description of what those are, that's going to be a part of those.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great point, that's a good idea. Thank you.
I will say that, uh, V L C T has some excellent resources that it is where that all can take you from, that describe what those positions are right now. But I'll be drawing directly from there and putting it on our website as well.
It's also in the town handbook.
Yeah, I can send the town handbook as well. Uh, I'll also put on the web, pictures on the website.
Okay, anything else on Article Six? Okay, moving on to Article Seven. We will transact any other non-binding business. If you would like to bring up anything or speak, I welcome you to speak. I do ask that you state your name, come up to the microphone, and limit it to three minutes. Yes?
Kathy Pennon, I'm just looking at the highway capital equipment schedule, and I found the town had two big trucks plus the new one ton that they got this past year, and I only see the twenty nineteen where it's held truck and on my, or, so the road.
I apologize for that, Kathy. I was made aware of that, and it, it slipped through my editing that that's not included on there. Um, there are, there are, and then also that the amount paid for the, um, uh, sorry, the amount paid for the salt tri, uh, the salt truck isn't the actual price paid. That, that was also, so I will make sure that's updated on the websites. Uh, the website, I can't correct the town report at this point. So again, I apologize. It slipped through my editing now.
Well, I thought, and the other thing is, I thought we paid more for the silver out than, um, fifty-four thousand.
No, more, more was, um, more was spent on the truck after we bought it, but the purchase price was around fifty-four thousand.
Debbie?
I'm, I'm, I'm curious, what was that on the truck?
I'm sorry?
What, what did we say about the truck?
Uh, radio's not installed in the truck. Um, there were some additional, like, add-ons in the truck as well. Uh, there were seats and seat covers that needed upgrading, and I don't have the list in front of me, but I'd be happy to talk.
I don't know why they need upgraded seats. I delivered that truck to town, and those seats were fine. I think somebody's going to start launching this a little closer. And along with that, um, I think anytime we hire somebody, it should be put in the paper that we're looking for help. It should be listed. We should not be letting our foreman just handpick people. Now, I have no, nothing against, um, our, our new, uh, you know, Virgen. I have good worker and everything. But it should not be handpicked by the, by the, you know, foreman. It should be listed in the paper. You say you can be of good help. You don't know until you rest there and see who applies for the job. Do I think you find anybody better? Well, we're not. Well, legally and it's good, you know, practice to test what's on there and who they're looking for for help and stuff, not just go hire someone.
We did that for the town clerk and also for the town assistant clerk. We did.
But you need to do it for the role group.
That's true.
That's the one that paid that cost us the most. Whether it's between, uh, their income and all their benefits and stuff, and what they're doing on the boat. It should have been more, I'm not going to, it should have advertised that you were looking for someone. It's just good practice.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir?
Jamie Davie, I think I can address Kathy Pennon's, uh, question. So I think that one ton truck was ordered, and that was, I think, I would say the net after trade-in. The truck was more than fifty-four thousand.
You're right about that. It was the net after trade-in. The trade-in was approximately twenty-six thousand dollars. The net after trade-in was probably four thousand. Thank you, sorry about that.
Yes. Yeah, sorry. Well, you know, it's like, church, up and down.
Okay, um, I would like to see the select board in following here, um, rethink the health insurance benefits for the town employees. Um, this is about the only place that you can get one hundred percent paid health insurance. Most everybody is eighty, twenty. And businesses and everybody else is negotiates different health insurance premiums every year, different health insurance plans that the town really needs to look into this. Because right now, in benefits, for our three employees, paying over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir?
Want to follow up on, on, on that?
Wait, I, I got only one person speaking at the time. Okay, yep.
Just sort of follow up on that. Um, the benefits that, that I was just talking about, want to be one more clear. I think if you look at that in a sense of not only providing a benefit to the employee, but to the family. So a lot of plans cover the family at maybe fifty percent. You know, it is substantial, uh, cover of the market authority of the employees. And how can they cover a hundred percent of everyone? So if you come to the town, you work in the town, you get this, and you're in fun time, you're making, covering your entire area. So that's been a big drop across. This is another way of controlling that, like, we used to come up with them sort of applied then, to say for every employee, we're going to give this much money, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, some amount of money. And if you, the employee, choose how to use that, allocate it to, uh, a better type of health plan, might cover your whole family. You might have a community board, if you're a single person and you don't have a family, you might cover all this.
So you're talking a cafeteria-style benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Know what you're talking about. I understand.
Thank you.
Any other comments or, uh, non-binding business comments? Yes, Sharon? Can you stand up so we can hear? Sorry, I'm deafer than a post.
Um, just about the spending, the amount of spending that, that they had made. As an example, the new truck, last year, um, they, we voted in the budget for the pickup truck. I think the amount was in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars. And that is not good actually to purchase. They purchased, uh, duly with a dump bed, and, um, it was thirty thousand more dollars. So, um, that to me seemed excessive without letting the town keep it low. You know, we thought we were just going to be purchasing another, another truck. So I would, you know, request that they, um, seriously look at the amount of spending versus the amount that is voted on.
Yeah. Anyone online? I didn't think of it.
No.
Having no further business?
Nope.
Oh! Oh, yeah. Stand up.
Actually, this, this is just so absurd to many counts that I really think it's terrible. When they're using the mower and picking it up and cutting the brush. It looks terrible. Instead of doing old-fashioned way and getting out there, we have two people that are not busy all day long with a chainsaw and cutting the brush instead of using that and cutting it. And I'm going to tell you the main reason, well, two main reasons. One, it looks terrible. Two, if somebody ever goes off the road, gets in an accident, you got those big stubble brushes picking out every which way at you. Okay, you're supposed to stay on the road. But what about that fire and rescue order that are out there in the middle of the night in the dark trying to get around those cars? I would like to see Canton be one of the first towns to say, no more. We're going to cut the brush with a chainsaw. No more of this, leaving these big stubble sticking out where somebody's going to get hurt. And if they do, it won't be called the town Canton anymore. It'll be called whatever their name is. Because it is very, very dangerous. And a lot of towns are doing it. And I would like to see us set the standard of saying, no, for safety reasons, we're not doing that anymore.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Yep, can you stand up, please? Thank you.
Usually we cut that stuff, brush it, cut it in the fall, late fall, early spring. Or that hasn't even started yet. So that would be a problem. I will say, the one thing I did talk to Rick about a few years ago, I said, to him, I said, Rick, cut that parcel before it goes to seed. And he has been doing that because I said, once it goes to seed, it's fresh. And I will say, maybe on some of the better roads, we're not part of the, you know, like, who would that?
Anybody else? Yes?
I left a vote from Canton, and I just wanted to say I agree with Debbie about the mowing, uh, sideways on the brush. It looks terrible, and I think it is, uh...
Well, I want to thank everybody who organized this evening, especially this wonderful spread, because I was coming from the school district meeting here and should be at the Virgens meeting.
Thank you.
So thank you for being here. We'll be here, and I want to remind everyone that polls are open tomorrow from seven AM to seven PM, and we look for hearing from you. Um, so one question I was asked, and I don't have the answer for our results. Are you going to be posting them on the website, outside on the org?
Uh, results will be posted everywhere possible as quickly as possible. Website, online, reports are front porch forum, posted at the usual spots, including B J's. Also, for folks who haven't been attending select board meetings, B J's is now a location for any select board attendees, any town report, anything that's, anything that I have to post is going to B J's as well. Uh, Hopkins Road, uh, Baltimore, Payton Town Church Office, B J's, and Town Garage is where we usually post events. So if you need any info about the town and additionally the website, uh, it will be posted in as many places as possible as quickly as possible. I'm planning out all night tomorrow to make sure everything gets updated, sensitive state, and everyone will have the results of the elections as quickly as possible.